The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call the board meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, ask Mr. Dorff to read the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Ed. All right, before we start our open forum, I would just like to announce that if you'd like to view the agenda or any of the handouts provided for tonight's meeting, as well as minutes from past meetings and handouts, you can visit the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" at the top and then "Board of Education" on the left. And then on that left menu, you will find a link called "Agendas and Minutes." This link will take you to a website called Neptune where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. The board will provide our community with two different opportunities to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, which is next, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items as noted on our agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers on that topic have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper to my left will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by the board are prohibited. At this point, we have a number of people that have filled out a form and would like to speak before the board. I'll call them up in the order we received them. First is Tara De Pra. And if you actually, sorry, the podium over there, thank you.
So, my name is Tara De Pra. My address is 1245 South Quincy Street. I'm here today both as a parent of an Aldo Leopold student and as a sister-in-law to express my support for Bridgette De Pra. I'm specifically asking that she return to her teaching position this fall at Aldo Leopold Community School. Given the trauma that my family has experienced in the last month, I hope you'll consider my unique position in supporting Bridgette. Her return to Aldo is in the best interest of Bridgette, our family, which supports her unconditionally, and most important, the students of Aldo. Ultimately, her return would support the ethos of Aldo's community spirit and its value of restorative justice. Because Bridgette is a teacher in a position of trust and because my brother is charged with exploiting children, it's easy to see how she could be tainted by association. And it's easy to see how the powers that be would worry about her impact on their school's reputation. NBC 26 has shown us what a powerful headline this story makes. But precisely because of this, it's important to clearly state my main point here. It is wrong not to reinstate Bridgette to her job at Aldo because of my brother's charges. Bridgette's position as a teacher has nothing to do with my brother's charges. Anything other than rallying behind her in this hour of need would be unjust in a form of victim shaming. It's easy to overlook, but the fact is that Bridgette and her sons, one of whom is an Aldo student, are among the central victims of this ordeal. In the last month, Bridgette has learned terrible things about her husband, leading for her to file for divorce. Practically speaking, she's lost a co-bredwinner and will have to raise her two young children, ages two and six, as a single parent in the truest sense of the word, and she must guide them through this confusing, painful reality. Amidst the trauma of her personal life, it's essential that the school not use the charges against her soon-to-be ex-husband to further victimize Bridgette or her boys. So the question remains, how should the district respond? The response thus far has been disappointing, to put it mildly. Last Tuesday, Bridgette met with Principal Lambert, Human Resources, and the union representative to discuss the conclusion of her administrative leave. Here, Human Resources informed Bridgette that she was being moved to another school. When Bridgette asked why, Principal Lambert acknowledged the many letters of support she'd received on Bridgette's behalf, but then made a vague reference to the trouble the situation has caused, in addition to the power of negative voices. On Friday, Human Resources contacted Bridgette, offering her a single alternative: move to a position teaching 5th grade at Tank. Bridgette is frustrated by the lack of transparency in this process and does not want to leave Aldo. But she is primarily concerned about the impact this would have on her students, would they feel she's abandoned them? Bridgette's students deserve her to return to the classroom and they deserve an opportunity for real guidance and real communication. On this note, Bridgette has expressed a desire to host a restorative justice discussion, to give parents and students the chance to ask questions and to facilitate a sense of closure. An open dialogue like this is exactly the response Aldo should promote. It would model to Aldo's students that when something traumatic happens in the community, you don't ignore it and you don't make victims disappear. Moving her away from the community that loves her and supports her, that she is deeply invested in, suggests that the problem can be made to disappear. They can't. If we look to the Aldo Way for guidance, it clearly asks us to be brave. Think of what a powerful learning opportunity this could be for students: to see a role model with her life uprooted and to see her respond with strength, openness, reflection, persistence, and empathy. I suspect this lesson would resonate across their lives should we be courageous enough to facilitate the conversation. Bridgette is a teacher loved by her students and parents alike, one who provides a strong voice of advocacy. Just two weeks before her leave, we attended the Untitled Town Book and Author Festival together. During a Q&amp;A with poet and activist Dinese Smith, Bridgette asked for social justice poetry suggestions accessible to and appealing to middle school students. She continually improves her craft as a teacher and she is deeply committed to bettering her students. Aldo Leopold and its commitment to progressive education is central to her identity. If we shun her, the school, the community, and the Aldo Way are all diminished. These past weeks have shown me that amongst families, the Aldo Way is alive and well. I am deeply moved by the outpouring of support she has received from the community. But the question remains if members of the administration share those same foundational values or if they will act out of fear. My family will do everything in its power to support Bridgette and her sons as she works to rebuild her life. Aldo can and should be central in her ability to heal and to promote healing in the community. She loves her job, she loves her students, and her students love her. She was a student at Aldo a generation ago and her dream was always to return as a teacher. She belongs there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is, excuse me, Angela Allard.
Hello?
Oh, oh, sorry. Dr. Langenfeld would like to say something.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that people understand that no final decisions have been made. There have been a number of letters and things that have come our way that we're looking very seriously into. And just respectfully, I want to recognize that we can't get into a lot of personnel issues from the table, but the recognition that no decision has been made. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of misunderstanding. Again, sorry. My name is Angela Allard. I live at 1214 Emily Street. I come this evening, I wasn't sure if I was coming as a mother of an Aldo student or as a sister of Bridgette De Pra or just as an Aldo community member. There's been a lot of misinformation. There've been a lot of questions. There's been a lot going on for our family, personally, our blood family, our extended family. I consider Bridgette's in-laws my family and I also consider Aldo my family. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my sister. And probably to speak for my own healing because I think I will heal better if Aldo can heal together and that means keeping my sister there. I have two children who attend Aldo. I left Green Bay 20 years ago, 25 at this point. I was gone for 20 and I didn't come back until I realized that I had kids and they needed a school to go to. And when I started looking at education and opportunities that were out there, nothing, nothing in New Hampshire, even the private schools, even the private schools that people send their children across the country to attend could compare to the education and community and family that Aldo is. So I picked up my entire family and we moved back to Green Bay. And I have not regretted that choice for a second. My children attend Aldo. My sister, two years later, started teaching at Aldo. Her child attends Aldo. All of my, we call them almost cousins, a term coined by an Aldo teacher because they're really Bridgette's in-laws, but they are our cousins and our family. We talk about the Aldo family. It's really hard to separate the Aldo family from my family in any way. I think the entire group of parents who send their children to Aldo are devastated. I think it's brought up a lot of wounds and I think that there's a lot of trauma and it's so easy for misinformation and misunderstandings to happen. What is happening here is a result of my brother-in-law's actions. My sister had no part, no knowledge. She was pulled over by police on her way to school and told that her husband was going to be arrested for child pornography. That's it. That's it. Her life was ripped out from under her. I don't even know how I could begin to rebuild, but she has. I can't believe that the Aldo children won't get a chance to heal with her when she has been an integral part in helping my children heal. My children, a member of the community, not the Aldo family, asked me if my children were still going to Aldo when they found out that Bridgette was my sister and Lucas was my brother-in-law. And I said, "Yeah." Like, why wouldn't they? I can't imagine a better place for them to be. I trust that school, I trust that community. They're not just shielding my children from finding out what happened. Bridgette and I and my family are talking to my children about that. They're not pressing my children for answers. They're not looking for any information and they're not looking for my children to share any information. We have been silent. We have withheld our judgments, our feelings, our voice. And if you know our family, it's not easy for us to hold our voice. This is my chance to speak for my sister. This is my chance to speak for our community. Bridgette is part of the Aldo family. Bridgette is part of the teachers that I look forward to protecting my children. And there are other parents who look forward to Bridgette to help them navigate this. She wants to stay at Aldo. It blows my mind. I'm going to leave my kids there, Tara's going to leave her kids there. All of our family intends to stay at Aldo. We want Bridgette. We need Bridgette. Our community needs her. She went to Aldo. If she decides to speak to you this evening, she will do it with eloquence because of the values and the lessons that she learned from the Aldo Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angela Zaidmolder. I'm not trying to say I'm sorry. Zaidmolder? Thank you.
I'm shorter than you. My name is Angela Zaidmolder. I am a lifelong resident of Green Bay, a librarian, and a parent of two children who go to Aldo Leopold. The purpose of this letter is to address the moving of Bridgette De Pra from Aldo to Tank Elementary. My son, who is here to show his support for Bridgette, was lucky enough to have spent time with Bridgette during special school activities. In speaking with her, I have been so impressed by her passion for teaching at the middle school level and for helping kids navigate this often tough time in their lives. She engages and supports the students in her classes, but more importantly, she embodies the exact reason I send my children to Aldo. She cares deeply about them as people. She speaks with passion about how she wants each child to learn how to be a productive member of society and most of all, to be kind. She notices these kids who struggle socially and helps to build them up. She teaches all of her students the importance of caring for and looking out for one another. In this terrifying political and social climate, the statistics tied to suicide rates sometimes make a parent feel paralyzed with fear. It's comforting to know that the place they spend most of their day has someone like Bridgette who's watching out for more than their test scores, but for their emotional well-being. Aldo Leopold School is unique in that community is the main priority. School feels like family, as you've heard already. Students spend time on social justice units that help them see outside themselves and this gives me hope for the future. Aldo students are taught to stand up for each other and to fight for what's right even when it's difficult. When the news coverage started, my son and his friends were able to set aside the shock and concentrate on the important things. One, that their teacher's life as she knew it was over as her husband and partner was not the person she thought she knew and that he would sadly but justly be in jail. Her sons had basically lost their father and that people removed from the situation would form opinions about this beloved teacher that would likely be inaccurate. The discussions these children had about the impact on Bridgette's life were very thoughtful. They wanted her to know that they cared about her and they wanted her to know they wanted her back at Aldo. And so I implore you, please reconsider moving Bridgette De Pra from Aldo Leopold to Tank. She belongs at Aldo. She's such an integral part of the community that exists there. This situation exemplifies what our children are taught at Aldo: that we need to look out for one another and that we don't hide issues. We discuss and manage them together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Griffiths.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I understand that no final decisions have been made about...
Sorry, could you just give your name and address, quick?
Oh, pardon me. I'm Sarah Griffiths. I live at 1023 South Van Buren Street, Green Bay. And yes, I understand that no final decisions have been made on Bridgette's tenure at Aldo or possible relocation. But when I heard that this is a possibility, I felt it was very important to share my thoughts with you. I've been an Aldo parent for 10 years and I'm also a recent past member of the Aldo Leopold Parent Teacher Organization Board of Directors. So I've had a long history at Aldo Leopold. Our older of our two sons is currently going into his sophomore year at East High School, having finished at Aldo Leopold. And our younger of our two sons is going into 8th grade there. I've always been a strong believer in public education and supporter of our teachers and staff. I have the utmost respect for the leadership and teachers my sons have had the opportunity to learn from at Aldo, including Bridgette. One of the things I also wanted to share with you is that my husband, Ian Griffiths, is also very much in agreement with me that Aldo has been a special place for our sons and they have been, you know, developing and learning as, you know, independent thinkers and thoughtful learners, thanks in no small part to the environment that Aldo is for our family and for them. Our son, Allard, who is, as I said, going to be a sophomore, had Bridgette for a teacher in social studies and had an excellent experience with her. As others have said, she is a most caring and dedicated educator. We have always respected the opportunities we've had to interact with Bridgette, both at teacher conferences, at school, and also at events such as fundraisers for Aldo Leopold and just in the neighborhood and community. Our younger son, Hugh, has not had Bridgette yet as a regular teacher, but he is going into 8th grade and has had some very positive interactions with her as well. This past semester, he was in need of some focused attention at school and Bridgette was part of an instrumental group of caring educators there who really made a difference for him. When Principal Lambert indicated to families that Bridgette would be on a leave of absence and then later when my husband and I learned of the circumstances of that leave, we were concerned and really wanted Bridgette to know that she had our full support. When I learned that all charges against Bridgette were dismissed, I assumed that she would naturally be returning to Aldo in the fall and was extremely perplexed and surprised on every level that that was possibly in question. Others have mentioned the principles of restorative justice that are part of the Aldo Way. I can say that one of our sons was involved in a very powerful learning experience in which Principal Lambert and others at Aldo Leopold employed those principles. It was very effective. It has helped in a situation that was difficult for our son. And I would implore both the school and the district to consider employing those same values and principles in this situation as Tara so eloquently described. In closing, I'd just like to say that without teachers like Bridgette, Aldo would not be the place that it is. I've come to know it very intimately and I feel it would do a grave injustice to Bridgette and to the students of Aldo and our community to relocate her. I ask that if the conversation turns toward doing so, that you consider doing the right thing and keeping Bridgette where she belongs, at Aldo. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Bridgette Clarkson.
She decided that she'd be more comfortable having her mom read her letter.
Oh, okay. And is her mom Francie Clarkson? Yes, okay, I'll call Francie up then, next.
My name is Francie Clarkson. I'm from 834 Christiana Street here in Green Bay. I'd first like to read the statement from my daughter Bridgette. Hello, my name is Bridgette Clarkson. Bridgette De Pra is an awesome teacher. She loves her students as we all do. She is kind, sweet, and funny. Her students love her, but they never really understood what happened to her and they miss her dearly. They say that they were put in different classes with no idea what was going on in them. I'm willing to fight for her spot back. I believe that we all have a spot in Aldo families. Even if it means fighting, we will do it. We will fight for her. If you want to throw her to the wolves, we will still fight for her. Because we are a big group of people that think it's not right to just get rid of her or even replace her, but we believe that Bridgette should get her job back. Sincerely, Bridgette Clarkson, 4th grade Stausch's class. Would you like me to read my statement now or wait until later?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. My name is Francie Clarkson. My daughter's Bridgette, who's a 4th grader at Stausch's class at Aldo. We chose Aldo because of its reputation for forward-thinking, social justice, and community of supportive parents and faculty. In our time there, we have had great teachers like Ryan, Ned, and Stausch. Since kindergarten, my Bridgette has come home with a constant gold standard of what is right and what is wrong. The standard is called the Aldo Way. The Aldo Way is not just a catchphrase to my child. The Aldo Way is a standard of humanity that we all strive to live by. It's a standard that I failed to live by many times. But my Aldo child will step up and remind me, "We don't build a community of good neighbors by being anything less than Aldo." My child has never had Bridgette as a teacher, but that has not stopped Bridgette De Pra from having a great and positive impact on my child. I can't recall personally even saying more than a hello as I passed her in the hall. But when we heard the news of her arrest, we didn't immediately think about ourselves or how our child is impacted. We put ourselves in her shoes. And the Aldo Way kicked in, we put ourselves in her shoes and we asked one another how we could show love and support and understanding for the woman in need. We don't cut the weak and injured from the hurt. The strong lift up those hurting and we dust off those who have fallen and we never throw them to the wolves. When I heard she was being moved to Tank, I was angry to see the Aldo Way was being sold out, that the leaders in our school were more concerned possibly with appearances and fear of the unknown than they were about community and justice. I understand that as a teacher, she has a code of conduct to live by, but when the courts agreed that she was guilty of nothing, how do I explain to my daughter why she's still being punished by her school? Do we teach them that one tragedy of poor choice can derail a lifetime of hard work? We ask you not to make decisions out of fear, to not tarnish the Aldo Way legacy by kicking a woman when she's down. Her students were never given a real opportunity to understand what happened and because of that, the school allowed rumors and misinformed news outlets to tarnish this great teacher's reputation. We ask that you have the courage to show our children that when hard times hit, we lift up the hurt and struggling until they can stand on their own. Our number-one priority should be the privacy and well-being of any victims. Allow their loved ones to express how best they can be supported. Please reinstate Bridgette De Pra to her position at Aldo Leopold Community School so she can continue being an inspiration to kids who are in a chaotic and emotional phase of their own lives. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of my request.
Thank you. Next is Rob Clarkson.
My name is Rob Clarkson. Address is 834 Christiana Street. I'm here tonight with my wife and my daughter and friends to show our support for Bridgette. I can't speak as eloquently as a lot of people have tonight, but Aldo needs Bridgette. Bridgette needs Aldo. She's been an amazing, amazing champion for so many kids there. I don't know what else to say that hasn't been said already, but I do want to read a letter that a friend wrote who could not be here tonight. Dear School Board, A child's first teacher is special. At age 3, my daughter learned to read with the help of her incredibly kind, patient, and intelligent teacher. That teacher's name is Bridgette De Pra. That year, Bridgette turned 30 and she celebrated by inviting all the kids to a roller skating party. While some people thrive on leaving work at work, Bridgette has made her students an integral part of her life. What kind of person invites a bunch of preschoolers and their families to be a part of their life? A selfless one who truly loves her students, knows how to have good, clean fun, and lives a respectable life. After my daughter's 3K year with Bridgette, our family had to move to another school for financial reasons. That school abruptly closed two years later and forced us to move schools once again. After a few years at her third school, there was a significant turnover in staff and the tragic passing of her principal to cancer. We weren't excited about moving schools again, sending my daughter to her fourth school in six years because big changes are not ideal for a shy and anxious young girl. But when we walked through the doors of Aldo, my daughter saw Bridgette's familiar face, which alleviated some of her anxiety. Although she was disappointed to learn that Bridgette taught older grades, my daughter was eager to see her in the hallways. She looked forward to the year that she would enter middle school and get to have Bridgette as her teacher again. The 2017-2018 school year was that year. To no one's surprise, Bridgette quickly became my daughter's favorite teacher. I've witnessed my daughter create hundreds of pages of stories as a result of Bridgette's influence. Her vocabulary, critical thinking skills, and most importantly, her empathy to walk in someone else's shoes skyrocketed this year. About six weeks before school... About six weeks before school ended, my daughter said she didn't want it to ever end. Then on May 4th, 2018, my daughter came home feeling like something had been ripped out of her. Without warning and with a confusing suspicion that the teachers were lying or conspiring against students, she'd been told her favorite teacher was no longer there and was never coming back. No official explanation has been offered to the students by the faculty or staff since an email on May 3rd. The anxiety we'd worked years to quell came shooting back into my daughter's body with the lip-zip drama of the school and district, later backdroped against the area's media coverage. I watched my twelve-year-old cry herself to sleep first out of confusion and worry for her teacher, and then again through allegations and rumors that didn't align with any reasonable explanation of what this person was to her. She first wondered if Bridget was sick and dying with cancer, or if something had happened to one of her kids or family members. Her thoughts later wandered to the awful crimes she may have committed and a dread that her teacher was going to prison, perhaps never to be seen by her again. Middle school is tough enough. These kids need first and foremost to know the truth about what happened. At least, they should be able to talk with Bridget directly, and also their Aldo teachers, about what did or didn't happen. These kids will be better off if the adults around them model responsibility, empathy, and a quest to stabilize their academic experience. Mistakes have been made, and false allegations and charges now dropped or sorted out. So let's do the right thing and offer these students as close to a norm, return to normalcy as we can. Bridget deserves a restoration of her dignity and a return to normalcy, if such a thing is even possible as well. In my line of work, through which I visit nearly a hundred schools and libraries each year, I see the impact that a good teacher can have on our students. I've seen the demands, expectations, and quick-to-judge assumptions made on all sides between parents, educators, administrators, and the community. It says a lot about Bridget De Pra's character that so many people have spoken up on her behalf. In this day and age, as well as throughout history, too many women have been unjustly branded or ruined by the crimes of their spouses. Bridget and her children will continue to suffer the effects of what has happened in their personal life for years to come. We all have a role to play in minimizing the trauma to all young people involved and restoring justice to the falsely accused. On behalf of my daughter, my sincere request to the Green Bay Area Public School Board is that you find a way, let one of the most kind, patient, and intelligent teachers back into her position at Aldo Leopold Community School. Sincerely, Miranda Paul, Aldo Leopold Community School parent and taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Schmidt.
Good evening, and I'll start by thanking you for all the things you have to deal with. I'm here to... My name is Jim Schmidt. My address is 509 Spring Street. You got it?
Thank you.
I'm here to offer the city's resources on school safety. I just returned from a conference out in Boston where many mayors got together, and we talk about a myriad of things. But this was, this was the biggest one. And, of course, the mayor of Parkland was there. This David Hogg, who's a student leader when it comes to school safety, and he had some interesting comments. Secondly, this is a subject that, as you know, you're the school board, is discussed all the time by so many different people. I have a twenty-seven-year-old who I want to share a, just hand this to you. I don't want to read it, just an email that I got from her. I mean, like most of you, I talk to my kids every two or three days. And school safety, she's down in Asheville. Dr. Langenfeld, I know that you know her from when she did some work here at the United Way. And I just thought her perspective was, was interesting, and I'm looking at what other municipalities are doing and what other communities are doing. And as you'll read into this, I mean, this is kind of a father-daughter email, but I don't agree with everything. And as she ends this, that it's, it's nice that we can challenge each other's way of thinking. And thirdly, I want to say, I don't want the city to take any action without the school board's involvement. I see a communication came through, the city council, that we should be doing something about the schools. And I just want to, again, just, I'm here to, again, just remind you that, you know, we're, we're a partner. I mean, we, you know, we've got a lot of great things going on in Green Bay, and one of them is the Green Bay Public School System. And we promote that, we sell that, we use that as a recruiting tool. And as you, I see a couple of things that you didn't support, and I see some other things on your agenda. And as you continue to work through a very important issue, they're all important issues, a very, a current issue. I just ask that we can do whatever you need us to do, whether it's bringing in a mayor from a city that's done something, or bringing in speakers, or participating in some event. I know you're working hard at this. And again, I want to be here to thank you for all you're doing. We've got a terrific school system. The email I'm sharing with you from my daughter Anna, as you know, her favorite years were at Aldo Leopold. I think that's fitting I mention that. And just ask that if there's anything the school can do, or the, the city can do with the schools, we are at your ready. So again, thank you for, for what you're doing. We look forward to the continued partnership that we have with the Green Bay School District and the City of Green Bay.
Thank you. And lastly, is Bridget De Pra.
Hi, I'm Bridget De Pra. I live at 1357 Green Hill Street in Green Bay. Wasn't sure what I would say. I want to start by thanking you for having this wonderful district. I taught outside of the state in Arizona thirteen years ago, and you all know what it's like today, thirteen years later. And as I struggled through those years, I realized I needed to come back to Green Bay to be part of this community. I wanted to be part of Green Bay Area Public Schools. As was mentioned in one of my students' letters, I taught in private venues for a while, and I struggled because I didn't believe that private schools were the answer. I wanted to work in public schools, in, in particular, Green Bay Area Public Schools. And when the opportunity came to work at Aldo, I was overjoyed. I love Aldo Leopold. I love the students there. I love the families there. When I learned what was happening in my personal life, of course, I felt bad for myself. I couldn't even wrap my head around that. I worried for my children, who I didn't know how this would turn out, of course, I thought. I went to horrible places in my head when I learned of what was going on. But I worried about my students in those first hours and that they would feel abandoned. And I didn't want them to think that I abandoned them. I love them. I need them in my healing. I need to be able to voice my strength and my belief in myself and my belief in them, and I just want to be part of that. And I know that you are, that you are with me on what is right for the children. Somebody referenced these years of women being silenced. This is not my first time being a victim. I cannot believe I find myself in this position. I can't be silent. And the media made references to me. I know people in their minds are going to all sorts of places. So I'm using this as my time to voice to you my belief in Green Bay Area Public Schools. I want to be at Aldo, to continue teaching the things that, that I can share. This experience is tragic, but the values that Aldo has, we can get through this together. I have spent time in training that the school district provided, and it's all about amplifying student voice and standing up for what is right and social justice. And I don't have all the answers, but I know that together, we will find them and we will heal. And I just, you know, I, I just really want to return to Aldo. And I am so grateful that you're willing to hear me out. I have a ton of respect for all of you. What you do is amazing. And thank you to all of these wonderful people who showed up to say amazing things about me. Most people don't get to hear all the wonderful things they do voiced in an open forum. And in all this tragedy, this is a silver lining. I get to actually hear all the lives that I have helped make better. And thank you for, in return, being with me in this moment of need. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, I don't have any more forms filled out. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Rhoda Cambandu. I live at 1657 Birchwood Drive. And I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Bridget De Pra, who has taught two of my children at Aldo. My daughter Matthias first came to Bridget as a sixth grader. We were just moved from Milwaukee into the Green Bay Public School District. And my children had never been to a public school. We'd always attended private school in, in Milwaukee. So in coming into a public school, into Aldo, made a huge difference in my children's education and in their ability to absorb all the things that were available to them and in their learning. And Matthias's teacher, that sixth-grade year, one of them was Bridget. And to this day, Bridget continues and remains Matthias's very favorite teacher that she's had. She's now going into a sophomore, she's going to be a sophomore next year at East. And she still speaks with such regard, such high regard for Bridget. My daughter Zola also had Bridget at Aldo this year for language arts and was devastated when she learned about what had happened. But her support and her love for Bridget has been unwavering. I had an opportunity last summer to spend some time with Bridget on a continuing, continuing education institute at UW Madison. And I really got to know her. We drove down together. We spent, you know, many hours together learning about restorative justice, learning about hip-hop education, and how to reach as many students as we can by opening up our own experiences in life. And Bridget was right there, learning as much as she could to bring different modalities of teaching to her students. This is a valuable teacher. Aldo needs Bridget. We need Bridget to come back to Aldo so that we can get a hold of this thing and, and shape it. Make it ours. Own it, but own it together. And we can't do that. We can't move on from this without Bridget's input and without, without her presence in our school. She is a wonderful teacher. I, she's a wonderful friend. And it would break my heart, it would break my children's heart and their friends if she didn't come back to school. And so I just want you to know that she has a lot of support in, you know, in me, in my children, and in, you know, many of the other students at Aldo, and we would love to have her back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we will then move on to our roll call. Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
Lomond?
Here.
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 He's excused.
Thor?
Here.
Barbian? Becker?
All right, we have six out of seven board members present tonight. To my left is our superintendent, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld. To my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And our two intercity student council members are here tonight. To my far right, Jamie Barbian, who's president of InterCity Student Council from West, and Noah Becker, also from West High School. Would entertain a motion under minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Oh, we have to roll call? We changed our... No, not for that? Okay. No, there are no communications to be placed on file, and next is monitoring reports that will be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
I'd like to invite John Magnus to the table. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Sure. So basically, we have been working with the monitoring reports, and the purpose of the monitoring reports is to make sure that the board has access to the measures that the board would like and that the district would like to provide to ensure that there's accuracy and accountability for student performance. And with the, the recent work that we've been doing with strategic planning, in addition to the board's work with evaluation, we want to make sure that these two systems are tightly aligned so that we can have a through-line of accountability, so to speak, from what happens in the classroom to what happens at the principal level, director level, and through the superintendent and the board's work. So our monitoring reports basically have taken information and feedback from, from where the board has been, been working with, with things in the past couple of weeks, in addition to work that we have previously put together, and puts together a suggestion for a series of reports that would occur throughout the rest of this year and beyond. So this would be complementing a circular process where we can do cycles of inquiry looking at, at improvement in a variety of areas. So if you take a look at the chart within the memo that we provided, and I'm going to put on my glasses here, it starts out with, basically, today is, is focusing on a summary of, summary of progress monitoring alignment and a schedule of upcoming progress monitoring. When I met with the smaller committee, we discussed this as far as possible options, trying to work out a plan so that we have clear check-ins on the things that the, the board and the district have agreed are important to us, the things that focus on our measures for our four priority areas of academic excellence, engagement, thriving workforce, and personalized pathways. So we would be spending the July monitoring reports focusing on, on our survey data that we've conducted throughout the year, various surveys, and comparing the, the surveys that we have. That would be Dr. Gwen Strampf. And then in August, we would be working on a academics and behavior proficiency growth monitoring report. Basically, it would be a baseline of where we are with the measures that we have, we've called out, looking at our baseline, our current reality, and then considering next steps. And we're, we're asking the board to consider that as, as a possibility, as, as an annual retreat that we would have, because it allows us to collect the information that, that is processed in, in through June, and for us to take the time in, in August to dive deep, as we did last year to some extent, to look at the coming year. Then, the board had previously asked for an update on personalized pathways in International Baccalaureate, which was, we would move from our August and July dates that we had to have those as our September reports. So there are things that are annual, and those are noted as annual reports. And then there are things that will be interspersed in the months that don't have the annual, the annual checkmarks. So if, if the board is interested in learning more about a particular area, like in this case, personalized pathways in International Baccalaureate, there, there are areas within our progress monitoring that we're able to do that. And of course, we could do more than one progress monitoring report a month if, if that was requested, but this really keeps us tightly aligned to what the, the board has called out and the district has called out as important. We would be focusing on our departmental success plans annually, looking at that in October, so that we could take what we have worked on as far as our, our supports and how are the different departments going to support the overall district actions every October. And then every November, we suggest that we would do a deeper dive into literacy, since that's one of our extremely important focus areas. And then we would look at our, our state report cards annually in December. We realize that the state report card is, is one window of measurement, but it is the most public window, and we want to make sure that that's something we can offer on an annual basis. Then, in January, we would look at math. And in this, this case, for this year, we would be, it'd be a good check-in time for us to look at, how is the new Bridges Math implementation going? We would have some pretty good first semester data, looking at, at how things are moving forward, and be able to use that as a checkpoint. And speaking of checkpoints, February would be a time that we'd be able to do a mid-year academics and proficient, behavior proficiency growth progress monitoring. So it'd allow us for mid-year check-in to see how we're doing in our, in our academic... in our academics and behaviors, and then go more deeply into behavior in March of each year. The April and May dates for 2019 are left open, depending on board need. And again, this is just a recommendation that we put together. But if there were particular areas that the board would like deeper reporting or focus, for example, in the past, we've, recent past, we've focused on alternative learning. We focused on English language learners and a variety of other subject areas. It allows us to give deeper reports to the board on those individual areas. And then, again, in June, we would have an opportunity for a calibration of the monitoring report process, where we can take a look at, how did this work for us and for the district, unfolding, looking at progress monitoring over time? So, this is our suggestion for how we can use the progress monitoring reporting process to best meet the needs of the district and report on a regular basis and have it be more of a standing item, as opposed to something that is coming through at various times. It gives us checkpoints throughout the year.
Any questions, Ed?
Thank you. The schedule looks fine to me. One of the things, though, that as I look at it, I'm looking at August and February, the topic, and it's great, looking at academics, behavior proficiency, growth monitoring. My concern, though, is looking at August where it says baseline data. And unless I'm reading too much into it, we have data going back for years.
Sure.
Are you suggesting here that we would use, that we would start our baseline now, as opposed to going back and doing it a little bit more longitudinally?
No, we certainly have longitudinal data that we want to look at and want to use. It's extremely important, and we've been monitoring, and it's been part of our continuous improvement process over the years. But thinking about it from a standpoint of, the board has been more specific in what measures, both the leading and lagging indicators that are being called out. And we want to make sure that those are clearly reflected as, definitely not a starting point, but a snapshot at this point in this year, so a baseline for the eighteen nineteen school year. Not standing alone, apart from the time and context of what's happened before, but as a baseline for the school year.
Okay, all right.
And isn't it true, this is the, last year was the first school year that we had all of our elementary schools that did the STAR testing in a way that we can now collect that NCE data over time?
Yes, so we have...
We had some doing it before, but not hundred percent...
There were irregularities in the way that different schools were assessing to some degree. And so, we wanted to make sure that we have consistency of practice so that we're all testing all kids in the same way. One important piece to bring forward, too, is that September month, we really took the feedback from staff and from the association quite seriously about there being too much testing in September, and there wasn't an ability for staff to focus deeply on establishing relationships. We heard a lot about relationships and how important that is. I believe that as well. So, we're really having September be a no-assessment month, with the focus being on allowing teachers to establish, opportunity to establish routines and relationships that will pay off with greater student success throughout the year. So, that is part of the process as well.
Anybody else? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is our superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
We have a very small calendar for July. The district office is closed on July fourth. And July ninth is our teaching and learning work session at five thirty here in the boardroom. Immediately following that is the organizational support work session meeting, and then the regular board meeting on July sixteenth. So, board meetings in July are early, the ninth and the sixteenth. And that is the calendar for July. And the next item we have is the Boundary Task Force Report. Coming to the table are the co-facilitators of that group. They will be presenting, Luke Davis and Dan Kiernan. So, welcome.
Hi. Board members, parents, students, staff, fellow citizens, members of the media, thank you for your time and your interest. I'm Dan Kiernan. This is Luke Davis. This presentation briefly summarizes the work of the district Boundary Task Force that has been since the past November. I strongly urge you to read the full report. The school board posed this question. What are the short-term and long-term solutions to best address student enrollment and space capacity across the district?
Towards this and Task Force, through the work of...
Let me out of your line. Too far?
Through the work of citizens, the district, city, and county staff, we all spent hundreds of hours to reach this informed decision.
Thank you.
As you can see, we have a lot of meetings throughout the year. It was primarily once every month, and towards the end, we added more. So, as the Task Force sorted through the information, its members grasped the complexity of this issue and added meetings to the schedule to accommodate the volume of data towards this discussion.
The Task Force took a data-driven approach to make informed decisions. Gbaps staff explained policies, school capacities, transfers between schools in the districts, student transfers in and out of the district, transportation issues, and vouchers, to name but a few topics. The district IT staff visually captured student enrollment trends by using a data analytics tool called Guide K-12 to show movement in, out, and within the district. The very revealing fact is this, great movement occurs by students in the district. True, students move from, you know, Green Bay to Ashwabandam, that's the one that makes the media. But students come from places like Okanto and Denmark to attend Green Bay area schools. Furthermore, a surprising amount of movement occurs as students and parents choose a district school other than the one assigned to them as their neighborhood school. The Task Force examined also long-term trends of population and development, since tomorrow's trends become today's students. The presentations highlighted both permitted and potential future plans for single and multifamily housing. Task Force is probed to see where this housing might lead to new students. Pages of our results fill this binder here, as well as electrons on your website. I just thought I wanted to show that, to show how much information was actually gathered by the Task Force.
All right. So, we'll talk about the priorities that the board gave the Boundary Task Force. There are a number of ways that we weighed the value of the proposed solutions that the Task Force considered. For example, a solution that honors the students' and family wishes, as well as being fiscally responsible, would be more appealing than an option that only accomplishes one or the other. So additionally, so this slide actually shows the order that we took most into account. The solutions should be driven by the data.
I'm sorry, I did one extra slide. I want to make sure I'm at the right point here.
Okay. The solutions should be driven by the data. They will work with the future growth. And as for all things in Gbaps, the solutions will be, and must be made, in the best interest of students and families. Solutions must spend each dollar wisely and also support the very important neighborhood schools. As mentioned, the Task Force strongly asked the school board to consider how each decision affects the mix of students from upper, middle, and working-class families.
We also want to emphasize what our recommendations are not. The Task Force wanted me to communicate this strongly. These Task Force recommendations are that. You hold the power as elected officials, and ultimate decision-making is up to you. They are not presented in any priority also. Don't take the first one as the highest priority one by the Task Force. Also, I was instructed and agreed with the idea that, well, recommendations forwarded are a majority. In no way should you conclude that it was a unanimous decision. What does this point to? Simply stated, a plurality of opinions existed, and we wanted to represent it as such. With these qualifications, here are the recommendations.
So, the first one, the Task Force suggests that the school board consider changing the middle school feeder patterns. Shifting some of the students from the east side to the west side could potentially alleviate prebels over capacity. To lessen disruption, present students would be grandfathered in and still attend their presently-assigned school. However, because Wisconsin is an open enrollment state, students and families can choose to go elsewhere.
What if the district harnessed this force of choosing to the advantage of students and the district? The Task Force noticed the great volume of students choosing a school that was not their neighborhood's school. We live in a time of choice in education. What if the school board harnessed this power of choice? Contrast to the previous slide, this option seeks to ride this wave of choice by having students choose to go where capacity exists in the district. As such, the board should amp up present programs, reproduce popular programs where they don't exist and where there is capacity, and create powerful new specialty programs that draw students, all to get students where capacity exists. As one example, DaVinci School draws students from all over the Green Bay metropolitan area. This type of powerful draw can have students choose to be where the district needs them. Choice, as the board well knows, is not without its problems. As mentioned, the board would need to maintain and attract students from all backgrounds to a school to maintain a diverse setting. This Task Force acknowledges that some families have fewer resources, making exercising a choice more difficult. The Task Force acknowledges difficulty in its next recommendation.
The Task Force recommends making traveling easier to high school students of choice. By using capacity that already exists within the Green Bay area public school district, this option could also be very fiscally responsible. Also, ease of transportation may keep students from open-enrolling out of the district, keeping more dollars in the district by getting rid of barriers to transportation. The district aids travels, the district aids travels by students of all socioeconomic levels. The next recommendation that we give to the board, as discussed above, programs of incredible draw put students into schools like DaVinci. And the Task Force recommends that the board build programs that draw students where capacity exists.
And I noticed which slide I skipped. It talked about the four issues, the first one being prebble capacity. And this is our second issue that was identified by the Task Force, which is west side capacity being way underutilized. These programs still honor, still must honor the Task Force recommendation that Gbaps, many and varied demographics are one of its assets. As such, the choices the board makes must honor that diversity and not concentrate rich or poor. The next option for the west side is this. Market Gbaps. Besides building strong programs and creating new programs that pull students to schools with capacity, the district needs to tell people about that. That was one of the surprises that came up in the Task Force meetings. When you've got people that are very involved and very much educated, we're surprised by pages on the website that highlighted programs in the district. We felt, if we were blind to it, what is the general public blind to? The district has many good programs, but that word does not always get out. The Task Force calls the board to commit resources to marketing aggressively all its programs. People will seek out strong programs, but only once they are aware of those programs. Success in building programs requires that you market them and get them in front of people so that they can choose them. Blindness or lack of knowing about something prohibits that. This was our third issue, east side growth.
To better identify the east side growth, the Task Force really dug into the presentations by the city, county, and Oakdale View. For example, we looked at the number of builds in the city presentation that were numbered well over a thousand. And the city's presentation included the Grand View Development, Packerland, and many others. However, closer examination made, we needed closer examination to help us to this informed decision. As clarified in an email, the Grand View developer is not putting any basements into the ground until 2020 or further down the road. And the growth of the east side represents an opportunity for Gbaps. However, the growth needs to actually exist to justify every new school or new desks or supplies. When numbers justify a school, the board should authorize and build pre-K on the east side, pre-K through eights on the east side.
And furthermore, boundaries for prebble would stay intact. And it's still, the capacity issue at prebble would still need to be addressed. The second option builds on this. The numbers in the city presentation included Packerland, for example. This project, when examined, is creating housing, but is creating senior housing and lost, aimed at professionals. And if they don't sell to professionals, GWGB students, typically not families that have school-aged children. When the Grand View and Parkland JBS numbers are removed, the east side development drops from a thousand potential building, over a thousand potential building units, to a solid confirmed three hundred and seventeen single or multifamily units that are actually being built that can contain families, much lower when you look from, really dig into the numbers. Since Gbaps approaches its mission with care for students through data-driven decisions that are fiscally responsible, the Task Force could not recommend an eighty-five million-dollar high school at this time. The APL numbers are also worth noting, because they show a slight rise and then decline in school population as the next decade opens up. So, however, you know, given, numbers do change over time. And what this really says to the board is closely monitor that east side. We don't see it there. We can't recommend it at this time. But it very much needs and requires close monitoring for an intelligent, fiscally responsible decision that serves students can be made.
So, to wrap up, we need to strengthen and build programs to pull students to schools where capacity actually exists. Look at what Gbaps does well and recreate it on the east side. Provide buses to allow families of all incomes to choose and attend those schools. Market the Gbaps programs. A student and family only choose program if they know that the program exists. Shift the feeder programs if this choice respects diversity. Monitor growth and make data-driven decisions, and maintain the socioeconomic diversity that makes students ready for college, career, and their community.
This was that fourth point, which I really want to drive home, partly because it sprung organically from discussions by the Task Force. If you remember your original charge and topics, this was nowhere on there. Task Force members have experienced Gbaps as students, parents, and teachers, et cetera. The Task Force considers the variety of students that come together to learn in Gbaps learning environments as a valuable asset. That diversity is something that no one else but Green Bay can bring to the table in education. The student learns as much from the student next to them as they do from the teacher in front of the chalkboard. If you don't have a person from varied backgrounds, you're not going to get that experience in your learning. So, you know, that, can't emphasize that socioeconomic diversity enough. We need to maintain it. We need to make sure that new programs also clone that diversity. For example, DaVinci right now is way below what it should be, as is Aldo, if it were to mirror the socioeconomic diversity of the rest of the district. Could be a follow-up study for the board to pursue. Studies show that learning in a diverse environment prepares students for living in a diverse environment. So, we celebrate that as a Task Force, and I want to really drive that point home. In contrast to what we do recommend, this is what we do not recommend. Overall, boundary changes are not recommended, as well as an additional east side high school at this time.
I would like, we, as co-chairs, we'd like to give a special thanks to the hundreds and hundreds of hours that volunteers and professionals really put into these Task Force. But we'd like to particularly thank students who have volunteered, parents, family members, businessmen, anyone who wanted to. We'd like to thank them who participated to produce this report that you guys have given, or that you guys have been given. So, thank you to you all.
Any questions, comments? Any questions, comments?
I have a comment. I would like to also thank the hours and hours that the volunteers put in. I know we have a number of the folks who are on the team in the audience. I think that with every task force, we keep learning in terms of how to make sure that we have inclusive voices and broaden so that our whole community is represented. I think that as this moves forward, the goal of the task force was to bring forward recommendations, and the Board of Education will have opportunity to discuss, and then they'll give us the direction as to where to take those next steps. So, I know that you've spent countless, countless hours as well as leadership in this particular endeavor, and it's very near and dear to your hearts, and I can't tell you, having been able to sit in on a couple of the meetings and listen carefully to what you had to really delve deep into, I think there were big aha moments that everyone experienced throughout this process. I sincerely appreciate all of your efforts, and I know that the commitment from the task force members is noteworthy and very, very much appreciated. So, thank you for that.
And I would also echo Dr. Langenfeld in terms of her thanks and appreciation for all the hours of work that you put into this. And I also want to say that...I would also like to say that I too also attended another of your meetings, and I know the depth of discussion that you had, and was impressed with how many people were willing to, you know, have back and forth and disagree at times with one another, and really work toward, you know, what is our...how close can we get to consensus on this? And, you know, you mentioned it's not always 100%. And I thought the report was really well-written, I thought it's very clear as to the recommendations, and gave enough background to understand what you've presented here today. So, again, I'll echo the...encourage the board members to, if you haven't already, to take a look at that, because it was very, very good.
Thank you, and thank you also for allowing us, the citizens, to engage in this messy beauty called democracy. Thank you. Much better understand what you do every month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, board policies. I'm wondering, we have the 100 series, which is the board...which are the board policies, and I'm wondering if there's a group of three people that would like to go through those as opposed to doing those...there's usually a lot of conversation around there, but three people that could go through the policies, decide if they're good, decide where they need to be changed, or if we need a new policy, and then bring those back to the board like we do with our other policies that we bring back for the whole board discussion.
And were we talking about a particular series?
Well, 100. The 100. The 100 series that applies to us. Yeah, those are our board policies, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
So, is it like a volunteer basis?
It's a volunteer basis right now.
Do I reduce us to rock, scissors, paper?
Or voluntold. I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to help out with that.
Yeah, I'm willing to, so.
You'll do it.
Oh, all right, we've got too many now.
Were you interested? I can step back.
Honestly, right now, of my work schedule, I'm assuming you want to do this over the summer?
Yeah.
Right? It's insanity during the day, so, yeah. I would not be able to commit, but I'd like to.
All right, well, we can talk later, and three of us will decide to do it, so I can certainly step out also. All right, and then success stories? I'll turn that back to Dr. Langenfeld.
Sure, I'm going to ask Lori to cue something up that was on NBC 26 about Dode Elementary, but I also wanted to recognize the fact that summer school started today, and that the Green Bay public schools, if your students enrolled in our schools, there is no cost, and it is a K-6 enrichment, and more than 8,000 students are participating this summer. Obviously, our high schools and secondary schools are also in full swing. And along with that, we also offer, and it was announced last week, the summer lunch program in the parks. Anyone who's interested in having that opportunity, it is available in the parks. There is, if you go to our website, you can see where those summer lunch opportunities are, and I think as the summer months go through for children, to be able to have nutritious food throughout the course of the summer months is very important, particularly at such an active time for their...in their lives as well. So, we're happy to have that going full swing as well. And again, if people don't know where that is or don't know where to go, please call our district office, and we would be able to help you make sure that you get those resources that you need, and we want to make sure everybody can participate, so. All right, are we good to go with Dode Elementary?
Green Bay are enjoying a new kind of recess. Thanks for the help of the school principals and teachers, tonight's partners in education. We really want our recess time to be a time where kids learn, not just about having fun, but also how to work together and how to interact together. Dode Elementary School Principal Natalie Heine says she wanted recess to be an active and engaging part of the class day. It's a day, and it's fun, okay? That's the job. That's why last year she started something called proactive recess. Sometimes we notice that there's a class or group of kids who are having issues with play, we play with them. Sure, talk about the right ways, do things, far as like using the rules, being safe, and also how to be kind to each other. Heine says it's important for the kids to exercise, play hard. We've seen a drop in behaviors overall since we've started to really try to be more organized during our recess. Whether they're races, kickball, soccer, kids always have an educator with them to guide them. And one of the most favorite activities...
Duck, duck. Duck, duck, it's like when you catch somebody's head, you say duck, duck, then after, say coo, they have to come and catch you.
Students say the joy of recess, it's pretty simple.
When we're playing, we play tag and everything, and then around...
And what's some added benefits in the classroom, too?
To, um...
We play together, we work together, we have fun together, and I think it makes a big difference in how they feel in school overall.
Just wanted to share that story. I think the movement and children moving and all of us moving is very important, so just thought I'd share that as part of the success story this week. And that concludes that part, and I know now we're to discussion and public comment. Thanks, I'll turn it back to you, Brenda.
He doesn't want to speak, he just wanted to hear any comments about the record.
Oh, okay. All right, so, do you want to just make copies of this for everybody? Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain the first motion under discussion of armed guards in schools.
I'll make that motion. Move that based on research and community input, the board does not support armed guards in schools.
Second. I think we'll wait. We have one person that wrote some comments that we prefer that we just read them, so he's...we'll get copies of those in a minute. One thing I just wanted to make a comment, and I think this is important for the...as we move forward, to me, when I see this motion, it's specifically about armed guards. I know that we have a comprehensive study of our school resource officer program that will be coming to us later in the summer. So, just for the community's benefit, I think this is, you know, still an ongoing conversation, it's just this motion just specifically speaks to the armed guard proposal.
Can we actually state for the record for people watching or listening that what is in schools right now, that we are locked up, and essentially that we do have school resource officers in place, because some of that is out there that's not necessarily accurate?
Yeah, we have 11 school resource officers. They spend the majority of their time in the middle school, in the middle schools and high schools. They are all armed, and their primary role in the schools is as a support to the administration, and they...and also just to be in the school, getting to know students, having relationships with students, helping students that, you know, maybe have problems out in the community with things, being able to be that person to help them with those kinds of issues. And they do, they are resources to our elementary schools, but like I said, they spend the majority of their time in our middle and high schools.
And can you talk about how many we have district-wide?
11.
Okay.
I'm just, it takes time to read this.
I just want to follow up on that. I mean, not to belabor it or offer more of an explanation than is necessary, but it's a good point that you raised around it. We have armed police officers in the schools currently, and there are 11 of them, and as I said, they are cited primarily in the middle schools and the high schools. They do visit elementary schools on an occasional basis, I don't know if it's specifically assigned, but it's rotation, on a rotation. The people who are assigned, I talked about, the two officers who would be assigned to, let's say, East and Washington, would also serve the elementary schools that feed into Washington ultimately east. And we have increased the number. You know, if I had my druthers, we'd have more of them, but we are talking about active-duty officers in that case, who are, as you said, they are armed. The other thing is that some years ago, the school board did authorize the placement of equipment lockers in the secondary schools. So, the type of equipment that Chief Smith's proposal had laid out there as far as additional weapons and ballistic vests and helmets and whatnot already exists in all of our secondary schools. They are locked away in a safe, in an office area. So, some of the things that were proposed are already in place. And again, it is with current active-duty trained officers who continually undergo upgraded training.
So, if there was anyone out there that was maybe questioning what you're saying or curious about the details of it, where would they look for that?
I think the first place they might want to go would be to talk to, either call Mr. Coller's office, Chris Coller's office, or Vicky Byer's office. You know, I'd suggest calling Chris's office first, and I don't have his number, but...
He's here, so, and he's going to come up and talk about the metal detector.
Yeah, he'll be up in a minute, yes.
You can certainly describe as much as appropriate just what that is, what that entails. You know, one of the things that personally I really appreciate about the school resource officers in the schools as opposed to strictly a designated armed guard is that they work on what we heard early on in the open forum, some of the most important things, and that's relationship building. They are not there strictly as an armed guard. They have that capacity, they have the training, they have the wherewithal to respond to violent critical incidents, but a more important role is that role of developing relationships with kids, with families, with staff, and that's the prevention and preparation that is really essential, that it can't be replaced by just posting an armed guard at the door.
And it's safe to say that I personally haven't been able to find anything out there that states that, in fact, you know, putting these armed guards in all of the schools would actually make us safer. There's really nothing out there that can be found that states that this is a guarantee.
There's, you know, it's speculation, it's a feeling of comfort, a feeling of comfort that people would have, and it's hard to deny that, but, you know, when you look at some of the circumstances that have happened, and I will refer to Parkland, I mean, it was a horrible, horrible tragedy, there wasn't an armed officer on scene. We go back to Columbine...
There was, there was.
There was.
Okay, it sounded like you said there wasn't, there was.
No, there was, there definitely was. As at Columbine in 1999, in fact, the two killers had engaged an armed officer. Their tactics were much different at the time than they are right now, but they had engaged, they had engaged him in gunfire, exchanged gunfire with him prior to going into the school. There was a horrible school shooting in northern Minnesota in 2005. There were two, they were not armed, albeit, but there were two guards at the school, and there was a metal detector at the school, and as it was, the killer was able to make entry, took out one of the guards, made entry. I guess what I'm, why I'm saying all this is there's no guarantees, no matter what, but some of the best things we have available to us, I do believe, are relations, is the relationship building, and I draw on personal experience with that when I go back to the situation we had at East High School in 2006. But for the fact that the student who came forward had that relationship with the school resource officer, that's the person he was looking for to tell about it, we may have had a horrible, horrible tragedy, but it was the relationships that averted that.
Andrew?
I'm going to propose an amendment, and I think it's, I think it's pretty much a technical amendment. It's not, I don't think it changes the substance at all. I did email it, since some of it is a few words going in and some of it is a few words going out, but it's mostly because you aren't really, to make a, to make a resolution, you should be supporting something or opposing something rather than not supporting something. So, just to make it clear, I would move to amend the motion. So, by adding and subtracting words such that it would read, "Be it resolved that based on board research and substantial community input, the Green Bay area public schools Board of Education is opposed to non-sworn officers as armed guards in schools."
Can you restate for the record what it was originally, again, just so people understand the difference?
That based on research and community input, the board does not support armed guards in schools.
I like the amendment because it does clarify that, it does differentiate between the fact that we do have armed officers in school, because in the amendment it says, it refers to non-sworn officers. We do have sworn officers, and I think that clarifies it.
Do you have a second, then?
Yeah, we didn't have a second.
I will second it.
All right.
Okay.
Could you please read it one more time?
He sent it as an email.
It is added, "be it resolved," I also added, "be it resolved that based on board research and substantial community input, the Green Bay area public schools Board of Education is opposed to non-sworn officers as armed guards in schools." As I was saying, for many of the same, besides the technical reason that to take a motion of, when you, I think we should be, you know, you're either actively supporting or actively opposing something. For me, as, in my individual opinion, I think that, I think that we're probably just about right with where we are with the number of sworn officers, but I think there are just so many reasons that if there was a decision that we maybe needed more armed support at some point, I really just think that sworn officers are the way to go, the training, the required updates of training, the fact that they're deputized, the fact that legally speaking, I think it's very unclear, I think it's very unclear that armed guards who are not officers may not have the same freedom to engage, and the fact that the structure, the mechanism for non-officer armed guards does not yet even exist legally, I just think for all those reasons, if, and I'm not there yet, but if we needed to have a few more, I think it should be sworn officers.
And as I said, I certainly would like to see more. The, you know, the original motion could be read to say that, well, that means you don't support having the school resource officers, so again, I appreciate the clarification. When you look at how policing has changed, particularly here in Green Bay, and you look at the community policing efforts that are out there, you see that more and more, the police... the police are getting into the neighborhoods, they're communicating with kids and families, I mean, playing pickup games of basketball, what have you. We saw the thing last winter with the, with the officer who bought lunch for the boy who needed to ride home. That's the kind of, of, of police presence that our schools have with our police liaison officers, and it's, it's much, much more than that armed guard aspect. And I, I think it's a huge benefit that we have those folks in the schools. And, and again, I certainly would like to see more, but, you know, definitely keeping the sworn officers, and if at all possible, if, if the need exists to expand with that in mind.
Oh, yeah, definitely. No, you hit your hand up while we were.
I just think to, to add to that, as, as the leadership in the school and former leader in the school, to have a, a, a school resource officer was always an invaluable asset to the school because they are out in the community, they do understand the culture and climate of the community. If there are issues that come forward, they know some things sometimes to share. And we also, I just want it known as we meet on a monthly basis with the chief and with staff to make sure that we're up to date on the most forward-thinking resources and supports for our schools and our communities. So I wanted to make sure that was known as well.
Rhonda? Well, I'm just looking through the, the actual proposal, chief's proposal, and I just want to make sure, and it probably does, but I just want to make sure that your amendment verbiage covers what's in here.
I, I think it's, I mean, I think it's clear, we're opposed to non-officer armed guards, and that's what that's about.
But it does leave you open to officers, sworn officer armed guards, rather than additional school resource officers, because I think they're two different things. I think the school resource officers can work in, as a, in the capacity as an armed guard when needed, but they're much more than an armed guard. And is this just saying it's okay to have sworn officers as armed guards?
We, we're doing that already. We do that already. When we hire officers to come in, we hire, at the high schools, at least, you know, when I was principal, we were still doing that, where we would hire officers, off-duty officers to come in and help bolster the, you know, presence during lunchtimes. We would hire additional officers for sporting events. We hire officers for dances, for, you know, for prom, for, for evening events. And they're not there in the capac, as the capacity of a, of a school resource officer where they're developing a relationship. Certainly they're, they are there as additional security, and they are sworn officers. So we're doing that already, and it's on an as-needed basis. I don't know what the budgets are for them, but there always was a budget that the principals would have, a discretionary budget to bring those folks in.
But that doesn't speak to the proposal that they want armed, an armed guard in every school all day.
Well, I think this is saying, this is saying no. It's saying no to this.
Not really, it's just saying it has to be a sworn officer.
It says, it's, it says, "is opposed to non-sworn officers as armed guards in schools." So are we in favor of sworn officers as armed guards in schools? That's what I'm worried about.
I think, so I would think that would be a, we could do a separate, we could do a separate motion that we're opposed to that, that plan as a whole, but I didn't want to take, if we went, I didn't see how you could go any further in this motion of being opposed to the non-sworn officer part without, without taking away some of the things like, like Ed was talking about with the sworn officer added, added security.
We're already doing that.
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, might as well.
I think your mic's on.
Is it on now?
Oh, yes, it is, okay.
I'm just wondering if, Andrew, if it would make sense to clarify your motion with respect to the purpose of those armed guards versus, because the not, the chief is proposing sworn officers to be in the schools, is my understanding. So non-sworn guards would not cover what the chief is proposing, and non-sworn takes on a different flavor than sworn officers in your schools. So what I, what I hear you saying is you're okay with the SROs in your schools, that you're okay with, when the school requests officers for purposes of additional security, but we would not be putting officers in our schools for purposes of, and, and you define what you want that purpose to be?
I guess my, I don't, I also don't want to, for, for my part, I don't want to make a motion that says that I'm in favor of, so my, my individual opinion is I think we're just about right where we're, just about right where we're at right now with, with SROs. I'm open to discussion about, you know, maybe a little bit more, a little bit.
Well, could we change maybe the sworn and put it in the words "active duty"? Would that change anything?
I'm wondering if Chris Coller should come to the table, because he may have some more input on this too.
I mean, if you're, if you're sworn once, are you always sworn? Or is the, is the chief saying that he would, he would actually deputize? Is he making that commitment, and that's why they would be sworn?
Hi. So the way that I, you know.
Yeah.
The way that I understand the proposal, and I don't have it in front of me, is the chief was proposing two options, one being retired law enforcement, which currently have the authority to carry weapons within the school, and the other option would be to use current law enforcement officers on a part-time basis. So, but the purpose of the security guards, based on his proposal, is to basically stand at the front entrance and monitor people coming in and out of the building. SROs, that's not their capacity. They'll do it if needed, but there's more to it than that, where those positions would be specifically intended to monitor entrances and exits to the building. So being sworn or non-sworn makes a difference. Being deputized, when you're sworn, you're a sworn officer. If you're not, like a civilian, you know, if I'm a, a community service officer, I'm non-sworn, I work for, I work for the department, but I don't have the arrest authority. Deputy, being deputized, you would have some arrest authority, but not full arrest powers within the jurisdiction unless you were a sheriff's deputy, if that makes sense.
So can I clarify? So this is on the table, right? This is what we're discussing? And can we, can I actually just state what it says specifically in the proposal? It says, "The presence of armed, fully-trained, embedded police officers and retired police officers to provide armed security for every public school." So that's the verbiage in the proposal, the chief's proposal. So somehow.
So is it, if it's a retired, when you're a retired officer, does your sworn status carry for life?
No.
You're just a civilian with a weapon?
Correct. You're a retired officer, that's covered under state law, that you're authorized to carry.
To have a weapon, but you're not an officer. You don't, you aren't, you don't have the rules of engagement that an officer has.
Now, if the chief decided to give them that authority, he could do that.
But you would have to deputize them.
No, it wouldn't be deputizing, but he'd have to authorize them and give them police powers, because they're not deputies. They were, they would be working under the city jurisdiction, not the sheriff's. The sheriff could deputize them as well.
Okay, the sheriff, okay, so the sheriff can deputize.
Correct.
Or the police chief can do something similar that's not called deputize, but he can give up private individual police powers.
I believe so. I mean, I don't want to be a hundred percent specific on that, because I don't know the research, but it's, it's like with our SROs. They can go work at WIC React and handle situations because they're deputized. They don't have full arrest powers at WIC React, but they're authorized to go there and handle situations as they do.
Because of jurisdictional issues?
Correct. And they have to be deputized in order to do it.
So based on what Rhonda read from the actual proposal, you could have language that would say, and that's what we tried to do when we crafted the motion for your consideration tonight, "The board does not support the chief's proposal, which provides as follows." And simply read in what, what Rhonda had just repeated directly from the chief's proposal. And, and you could put it in your resol, in the form of the resolution as well.
So I'd be, I'd be okay with adding that, but I think an important part here, since there are, there are plenty of ideas that have come up, and an idea separate from this that has certainly come up is, well, what about, there's been talk of also separately of retired military and other types of situations where someone would be a non-sworn, a non-sworn officer. So yes, I'm, I'm not supporting the chief's proposal, but I think that would be either a separate or additional part of this motion, which, which I would support.
But the chief's proposal is pretty specific about who it's for.
Right, but we're taking a board, we're taking a board position of what we support and what we oppose, and it's not limited to only looking at what the chief says and supporting or opposing it. I, I mean, I'm, I'm opposed to that. So, but I think this is, this is us taking our opinion on something where we had community input from, from the chief and hundreds of, of other people with a variety of ideas. So I, I'd kind of like to do both here as we stake out a position.
So what does that sound like?
It would either be an additional motion, or I would probably do it as an additional motion that resolved that the board is opposed to the police chief's proposal of an armed guard in every school. If that's.
What, could we just change your motion to say, because we're getting in the weeds with this non-sworn officer thing.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want to.
Just say that the, the motion is opposed to, I forgot what he said already, whatever you just said, you know, the chief's proposal of putting, or whatever, the proposal to put higher armed guards for each of our schools.
Right, because I don't, because this is not, I, I don't, I think, I don't think, I, I, the whole problem and public confusion that started is that the chief's, the chief's proposal was defining our position. So we spent a lot of time reacting to, this is the chief's proposal, this is the chief's proposal. So I don't want the chief's proposal to be the only thing to define how we take a position about armed guards.
But if we don't actually literally take a position on specifically the chief's proposal, then it's still kind of out there.
So we do that too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, need to put it in the form of a motion.
Well, we need to vote on this First Amendment.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a second. I mean, I'll make a, if we do, I guess we do the, if we do the First Amendment, then we can, you don't really want to get into amending amendments. So we could pass the amendment and then amend it by adding more, that's probably what I would.
Or, or Andrew, you could withdraw the motion as well.
Right, but if I withdraw the motion, then again, we're going to end up in a situation where we are reacting only that our entire.
I think you're saying withdraw, withdraw your amendment and rephrase it.
And rephrase it rather than voting.
And that way, we're not amending, doing a second amendment to it.
Because currently, your amendment states that we're just opposed to non-sworn officers as armed guards. It doesn't say we oppose armed guards at every school. You're just specifying that they, we are opposed to non-sworn officers.
Right, because I'm also saying that we're not, I'm not necessarily opposed to adding a few more officers, which could be, I mean, armed guarding is, is a portion of an officer's duties, correct?
But that's not what the proposal.
That's not what the proposal is.
Right, I'm aware of that.
I think you're trying, you're mixing SROs and armed guards together, and I think we need to try to separate them. SROs are a different entity than armed guards, because of their job duties. Yes, an SRO could stand at the door and guard it, but the whole job description of those, of the proposal is in that capacity.
Which is why he states to provide armed security for every public school. As the job description.
Right, but if there's any decision that, you know, okay, we need two more officers, I don't want the, I don't want there to be any.
Well, you're either opposed to armed guards and, or you're opposed to SROs, they're two different things.
Are they, are they two, are they two different things? Or is, or is armed guarding a duty of a police officer as well?
But if you call them an armed guard, you're not defining, you're defining a specific duty compared to an SRO who might at times stand in front of the door as people are coming in. But we're just saying, I mean, I think that, that what we're trying to say is we're not interested in hiring armed guards that are going to stand in front of our school doors, and that's all they do all day. I, I think we can say that without saying, I mean, and, and that doesn't mean that we don't open, you know, our, we don't open up our SRO program and add a few more SROs. We can still do that if we oppose armed guards.
Are there SROs conversation as part of that proposal? Doesn't it talk about the number of SROs we have within the chief's proposal? Is that?
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in there. So he's already differentiating his SROs.
Yep.
But again, I, I'm not letting, I don't want, the chief is not going to define how, how we state our values and beliefs about security, and that's exactly what got us into trouble here. And I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure that it creates a problem if we say we're opposed to armed guards in schools. I would argue that an SRO has a range of duties within our schools, one of which is to provide armed security. And so I would be concerned that a motion of being opposed to armed guards in schools could be mistaken as including our SRO program.
Can you, can you read it one more time, Rhonda?
Yep, okay. So this is the school defense officers, a proposal for making Green Bay area schools safer. That's the name of the proposal. Then it says, "This includes school resource officers as a detailed proposal for increasing the presence of armed, fully-trained, embedded police officers and retired police officers to provide armed security for every public school." So why couldn't we just state that we oppose the proposal for increasing the presence of armed, fully-trained, embedded police officers and retired police officers to provide armed security for every public school? Why can't we just do that?
Because if we say that the way you said it, then we're not, we're not opposing some of these other ideas like just retired military armed guards and these kinds of things. I don't, I don't see why we.
He gave it a name in there. School defense officers?
Yes.
So couldn't you just say that you're opposed to the chief's proposal to add school defense officers to the school district?
Yeah, that's the name of the proposal.
Okay, so we are, so everyone else would like to have the chief set the terms by which we'll decide what we are supportive of and what we're opposed to?
But isn't the point to address his proposal? Isn't that what you're doing, is addressing his proposal?
The point, yes, yeah. As I see it, the point is we're specifically addressing his proposal, and we're saying, you know, that we're not interested in, in following the specifics.
In the school defense officers proposal. It's not, yeah, we're, we don't support.
Okay, so I, see, I thought we were doing something based on all of the community input and taking a stand on an issue that isn't just one person's opinion.
But I think we are doing that when we talked about the use for the grant, grant with security steps, measures, all the things that we discussed before.
And we'll discuss when the SRO report comes to us.
And in those questions, it was specifically asked if they supported the chief's plan. So I think by addressing it that way, you're addressing what the community is saying that they did not support that plan, because that was one of the specific questions in there.
So I still say if we just say that we don't support armed guards in schools, that it could be taken as, it could be interpreted as we don't support SROs, because that is one of the things that SROs do.
Can we just state that we don't support school defense officers, a proposal for making Green Bay area schools safer?
Why?
The name of the proposal?
Okay, yes, but then again, we're, we're discounting all of, we're discounting much of what we got in the community input, which included, I, I don't want this proposal. I'm also not interested in certain other ideas that were brought to us, like having retired military be armed guards.
Then can we say Board of Education is opposed to the idea of armed guards in schools as proposed by Green Bay Police Chief, and would rather increase armed security in the form of SROs as needed?
No, because that's saying that, I, I don't like that either, because that's saying that we, I, I really, because I, I don't want to vote for a motion that says that I, appears that I support increasing SROs, because that's not where I'm at right now.
I agree.
Either.
I just think, I, I thought we were just making it clear to the community that we have put the, you know, that we. have put the, um, you know, that we've, we've received the chief's proposal, we've looked at it, we've considered it, and we've decided that that's not the direction we wanna go. And that's all we're trying to accomplish today. It doesn't stop any other decisions from happening on any other topics. And, and like Rhonda said, we already had our discussion about the grant. That took in a lot of community input. Um, you know, this is partly in response to the community. The SRO conversation that we'll have in a month or two will, will also continue to take community input from. It was my understanding that the goal of this was just to say, that plan, we're not, we're not gonna open that plan up and, and, you know, and, and, uh, put armed guards in our schools, or whatever you wanna call it.
What if we said that, go back to our original motion, that based on research and community input, the board does not support armed guards in schools as proposed by the Green Bay Police Ch- the Chief of Police?
Do you think we should tie it?
Then we're wasting the opportunity to close the other kinds.
I, I, that Rhonda's named the, how the chief names the, um, school defense officers versus the armed guards.
So, it's specific to this proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems to make more sense.
It doesn't close any other doors.
No, but we take another, then, I don't, since we're right here, I don't necessarily wanna drag this out for another hour and a month or two when we, I don't think there's anyone here at this table probably who likes any of these ideas that have come out in these discussions about things like retired military armed guards and other types of civilian armed guards, right? No, I don't think anyone here is interested in that, so why are we not taking that position now too?
Because there's not a proposal specifically to that. This is the proposal that was given and handed around, and has been discussed at length in the city.
This is what we're responding to.
He, he went to the Optimist Club and shared it.
Yeah, I know where he went, and I'm opposed to it. I'm, I'm opposed to it. Why can't we have both here?
What does the other one sound like, just so I know what you're talking about?
Okay, because I, the whole, okay, the whole point that caused me to spend weeks online explaining to the public that we never said anything about armed guards, right? Because the police chief gives a proposal, and it looks like we're supporting it, and really, of course, we weren't supporting, so no board action had been taken, right? So, it's been, I thought finally, we were getting out of reaction mode, and we're starting to make some of our own decisions instead of just saying yes or no to whatever is tossed out there on our behalf.
So, what is it that you're afraid of specifically that won't be covered if we just go with the motion and add the name of the proposal? What do you think tomorrow looks like?
If we're only naming that proposal, then we've, then we forego our opportunity tonight to take a stand about retired military armed guards and some of these other ideas that don't make sense, because we're limiting our opposition to what's in that chief's proposal.
Okay, so, but it does state retired police officers. Could we add as well as retired military to this?
I don't want any type of other, I, I, I don't, I don't see the insistence on limiting our response to only the, if we're saying we're opposed to the chief's proposal, then we're only opposed to what, I mean, I had other, I've had phone calls, you have phone calls and letters about how, hey, why don't we just get some properly, I've had people say, why don't you get properly trained, concealed carry civilians? I, I don't think that's a good idea, but I've had the suggestion. So, I guess I'm opposed to non sworn officers as armed guards in schools, and opposed in general to the, to having armed, armed guards in every school. But I do think if we say we're, I just don't like, I just don't, I think the whole, I think failure to define the issue ourselves is what got us to so much confusion now.
Andrew.
Yeah.
Currently, there's only two people that can actually carry weapons in schools. That's sworn law enforcement or retired law enforcement, retired military do not have the authority under the law to carry weapon in a school.
Right, but that doesn't stop-
So, they're not even part of the discussion.
That doesn't stop people from, that doesn't stop people from suggesting, and if it were, if it were legalized overnight, which sometimes happens, I would still support if we were to add anything, or when we add additional support as needed for special events, I want it to be sworn officers, as probably do all of you, so I don't see what we're arguing about.
We're not though, I don't think we're arguing. We're just trying to make sure that whatever we do decide is not gray, and that it actually kinda puts this to bed as much as we can.
So, if we finish the amendment, we haven't voted on the motion yet, and then we could add an additional piece that specifically says we're opposed to that.
You know, I think, when you, when you talk about other suggestions, to me, we're trying to, you know, communicate, because the city council still has this floating around. They had it in a committee. They're still trying to figure out, is this a plan? Is this something we're gonna work with? To, we're, we're just trying to say, no, the school district is not interested in, in putting this plan into place. Then, I mean, we don't take votes on everything that's ever been suggested to us. I mean, this is, we, we, we have not taken an opposition vote before. We've only, we only take approval votes where we're voting on something. So, this is a, as I see it, a very unique situation where we're specifically opposing something. If we get into the habit of opposing, having to take a vote on every idea that anybody ever came to us about, so that, that we're responding to, to community ideas, then we're, we're gonna get ourselves into, you know, a lot of, a lot of mess. To me, it's just helping the community, the people that are looking at this plan, trying to decide if it, if it's gonna go or not, and what, what their role in that plan might be. We're just saying, no, that the board is saying, we're not interested in moving forward with this plan. I don't think we need to oppose every other idea in, because in the end, we're the ones that approve things. So, if, if something came forward and we had, you know, a proposal of something else, and, you know, we vote to approve it or not. So, that's, I, I just feel like we need to keep it simple and make it, and make it clear as to what we're trying to communicate with this specific, with this specific, um, uh, motion.
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw this because there's no, I don't want there to be a split vote over something where there is no actual issue disagreement among anyone and create that kind of confusion. So, I'll, I'll withdraw the amendment, but I think we're missing, I think we're missing an opportunity. I don't think we need to take positions and support or opposition to everything, but we do it sometimes. We do it with bills and legislation. Um, there are a lot of people who think it is, it's, it's a, it's a minority, but there's a, a, there are plenty of people, um, I've had people volunteer myself, meaning well, who said, you know, I would, I would be honored to work part-time as an armed security guard protecting a school in Green Bay as a responsible concealed carry civilian, who, someone who me, absolutely means well, but it's not any place I want to go. So...
But isn't there already something in place in regards to that with the, with the state law?
There's laws regarding who can carry weapons in a school, in a school zone.
In our, in our policy prohibits can carry concealed arms.
Well, if, if the motion was withdrawn, we can go back to the, the original motion that's been made and seconded, and, and, you know, I don't know if we need to go on record, or, or maybe this is going on record, that as we look at that term armed guards, uh, that does not include school resource officers. That does not include the, the police security that are, that's hired on an occasional basis and has been for years. So...
Well, if we're gonna go back, I think, I, I'll do this, then we should just strike the does not support armed guards and set, we should just say opposes the chief's proposal for armed guards. So...
So, what was-
So, we're back to the beginning. You still aren't supposed to say we don't support. You should be, so, I move to amend the motion by striking does not support armed guards in schools and replacing it with is opposed to the chief's plan of armed guards in schools. So, that would be the new amendment. So, it would say that based on research and community input, the board is opposed to the chief's plan for armed guards in schools.
Is there a second?
Uh, she's just passing around.
Suggestion perhaps, uh, armed guards as school, school defense officer, since that's the terminology that he's using. If you would use that instead of the term armed guards.
Sandy did it, right? Sandy, be resolved that based on board research and substantial community input, the Green Bay area public schools Board of Education is opposed to the police chief's school defense officers' proposal.
Sure.
Is that a second?
Um, so, where are we at with the amendment here? Is that a new amendment?
Did anyone second your-
No one seconded that.
No one seconded it. So, this one's on the table. Do I have a second?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
I'm seconded it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more?
Do you want to read it again?
Go ahead.
Be resolved that based on board research and substantial community input, the Green Bay area public schools Board of Education is opposed to the police chief's school defense officers' proposal.
Okay, yes. All right, are you ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All right, Sandy, thanks, Melissa.
Maroni?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Stork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
All right, next is a, a discussion on metal detectors, which is, of course, is another recommendation of, of some of our community members that came into our conversation. And, um, like we had our conversation two weeks ago, um, Chris Coller has given us a list of things to consider if we were to, um, consider metal detectors at any point in our schools.
Correct. So, the format of this, um, is similar to what was put out about the chief's proposal, just a, a high level overview of things to consider when thinking about the proposal of, from the community members to adding metal detectors in our schools. Um, a lot of the information, uh, it was, that came in this report, uh, was found in several of the articles that are attached to it. Uh, most considerably was one that was put out, um, called School Metal Detectors, National School Safety and Security Services, which is, uh, the article's written by Ken Trump, who is one of their security advisors. Um, and he has his items, uh, some of his work have been cited in, uh, things that are related to the new Office of School Safety. Um, and I felt that his article had quite a few things to really consider, uh, when it comes to metal detectors as far as, if you put a metal detector in a school, what does that do to the perception of, of the students? Is there an increased sense of safety or more reluctance to come to school? Um, if you're gonna put metal detectors in place, how many people are you gonna have there to operate them? What are the hours of the day that you're gonna operate them? Do you operate them at all hours of the schools open, including after-school activities? Do you require everyone to come through that same entrance? Do you put them at multiple locations so that the larger schools can have people, uh, go through them? And it comes into the same questions that we had over the chief's proposal, who's gonna coordinate those efforts? When it comes to purchasing the equipment, you can't look at just the initial cost, you have to look at the long-term costs of repair, replacement. Um, and then the policy aspect of it down the road as far as the different policies and procedures you need to put in place. Someone comes through a metal detector, it goes off, how do they respond? Um, if someone needs to be searched, what are the, how do you search them? What documentation do you have for searching them? What training do you give them to properly search someone? Are they even authorized to do the search? So, there's a lot of things that are, are to be considered. Um, training is obviously one of them. Uh, the types of, uh, metal detectors you would use, is it a portable one? Is it a stationary one? Is it a hand one that, um, based on information from the state attorney general's office, becomes more intrusive, um, under the Fourth Amendment when you're hand-winding someone? Am I saying that correctly? So, I think there's a lot of things to consider as a board, um, to determine, similar to the proposal by the chief. It's not just, let's get metal detectors and put them in there. It's if we get them, who's gonna operate them? What checks, system of checks and balances are we gonna have in place to make sure that the people that are operating them do it correctly, um, so that errors aren't made in searching? What happens if someone does come through with a weapon? How do they respond to that? What do they do? How do they handle it? How are the SROs a part of that? I think there's a lot of things just to consider before you, um, would say yes or no to the idea of metal detectors. A lot of the research suggests that metal detectors, um, in larger cities have an effect if there is increased gun violence. I don't know the specific statistics in this area, but I don't know that we have that same type of gun violence in our community. And that would make it seem like metal detectors might not be the best idea for us. But I know there are districts in, in this state that have them. Um, I believe, uh, either Kenosha or Racine was just gonna be purchasing some more portable ones. But if you're going to use metal detectors, you have to make sure that you've got a system in place that all of your entrances are covered, so that someone couldn't, oh, I'm gonna circumvent the main entrance, and I'm gonna have someone open the side door, and I'm gonna bring my weapon in there. Or, well, school's only from seven to three, so we're only gonna use a metal detector at those hours, so someone can come in before or after hours and put a weapon in the building. Or your after-school activities, your basketball games, your football games, um, school buses, I mean, all those places are potential targets as well. So, um, I don't know that we've had anyone propose it. We've had definitely, uh, community members feel that we should be looking at metal detectors, but I think, um, Ed said it earlier, there are no guarantees. We do the best we can to make it as difficult as possible for someone with a weapon with bad intentions to get into our schools and hurt our students and our staff. Um, and in a perfect, no, not worrying about money or any of it, maybe this would be something that we would look into if we were able to fortify every entrance of our building to, to ensure that if they're coming through that metal detector, that's the only place that they'd be able to come into the building, and we're doing that 24/7 to ensure that there are no other opportunities for something to happen. Otherwise, in my opinion, you're not doing the complete job. You're, you're putting something up there that maybe makes people feel good about it, but in actuality, it's not giving you the complete security that you need.
But it doesn't always make you, people feel good about that. They might actually then sense that this is an unsafe place.
Correct. And, like I said, the, the article by Ken was, when I, when I was asked to put this together, I read that article, and I, I reached out to Dr. Langefeld, and I said, I don't know if you want me to write something up, but this is pretty much exactly what I would write up. And it's not that I'm taking a position in his, with his philosophies or the way he does his job, but there's excellent things to think about in there as far as what you really wanna do, and understanding if you do this, here are the other things that you need to consider to make sure that it's an effective program. Because if it's not an effective program, then is it the best use of your time and money? And that's ultimately what we have to do.
And, and I think that's a good point, Chris. I mean, what, what do you, if, if you're proposing it, what do you anticipate it's going to do? And you said, are you using them 24/7? Are you using them for basketball games? Are you using them for, uh, the, the concerts? Are you using them on weekends when, when, uh, the, uh, student council is coming in and decorating for snowball? Uh, if you're not-
Or practices or any of that.
Then you've got, then you've got gaps.
Our schools are used all the time.
The other thing that, um, when, when I look at this and, and I walk around schools and what have you, we have policy in place already that says school doors are to be locked. There'd be one point of entrance. Uh, classroom doors are to be closed and locked during, during classroom time. And I know that's not followed 100%. Uh, you can, on any given day, unfortunately, you can find doors that are blocked open, you know, for convenience sake and what have you. So, it, it's a, you know, it might give people a, a sense of comfort, but it's a real false sense of comfort. Uh, everybody going on an airplane has to go through a metal detector, some type of, of screening. Uh, that's guaranteed. You can't guarantee that everybody coming into the school is going to be screened in that same way. So, unless you can-
And on that account, how many people are there to operate that?
Well, there you go.
Well, that's, we, we talked very specifically about who would be there to respond, and, um, what you would need to make sure that you had the right people and the resources to respond appropriately, depending upon what was found, seen, checked, and whatnot. So, that was very concerning. All of these articles are live links that anybody could go to the district website, and I would encourage people who may not know a lot about metal detectors. I think it was very, very helpful, and I really appreciate, Chris, you putting all these articles together so that for, for us who didn't have a lot of background in metal detectors had a much greater understanding, you know? And I think some of the pieces that, that the research would tell you is, the, the school use for metal detectors is not something that's been going on for 20 years or anything. There aren't, you know, a lot of systems with-
In some communities, the answer to that would be yes, but those are, you know, New York, probably Chicago.
Very, very large.
Higher rates of gun violence.
Okay.
And specifically to address a lot of that gun violence, they would put in place. And if you read the articles, if, they specifically talk about what it's like in those communities and why they're in place. Hundred thousand New York schools who are in face airport-style security screening every day. That's for a specific reason, due to specific gun violence. That's for a specific reason due to specific gun violence.
So I would assume they had people there wanding and people right there in terms of safety.
And in some cases, if there is metal detectors, the violence happens on the front lawn of the school instead of inside of the school.
And in fact, the matter is too, a lot of the districts that you mentioned have their own, believe it or not, police forces.
Mm-hmm.
The school district police forces, imagine they do.
As the chief's proposal, that's where a lot of, you know, in California, they had their own.
Los Angeles.
The Los Angeles School Police Department that handled all of their stuff.
So where he came from, from that area?
From Los Angeles, yes. They, the schools have their own police department that patrol and deal with all things that are in the school. LAPD does not, they'll assist them, but there is a specific, it'd be like having the Green Bay Public School Police Department that operated within their district and patrolled and managed all the incidents in our district. Which would be great, but it'd be highly costly.
Well, no, LA Public Schools is like 500,000 students.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a city unto itself.
Right.
Yeah.
And they've got thousands of schools. Any questions?
I appreciate you putting that all together for the board.
If there's anything else, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, the articles are really good. Thanks for putting all those in.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, that's it.
All right. Did we want his contact information to the public?
Oh. I think that, yeah.
They can call the switchboard and ask for Chris Coller's to be transferred to his office.
Safety and security.
We have no legal update. Next is Inter-City Student Council Report. I'll turn it over to Jamie.
So, somewhere I guess we have a lot of things to do, but within ICSC, we had our elections. So I was elected president. Owen Brennan was elected vice president, and then Noah Becker was elected secretary. The other news with ICSC is that Patty Butcher stepped down from her position as the ICSE kind of advisor. So I think we're currently looking for people to take that decision.
There's, I believe there's proposals in there specifically for how student, student voices involved in that interview selection process.
Just, that's all.
All right, thank you, Jamie. I'd like to propose we take a break. Thank you. Okay. You wanted to make an amendment. All right, so we'll come back in about five minutes. All right, continue on. Next is our legislative liaison report. I'll turn that over to Laura.
Thank you, Brenda. We have a number of items, mostly articles. The first article that you guys received was a Journal Sentinel article by Alan Borset dated June 10th regarding the 20th anniversary of the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruling that it was constitutional for religious schools to receive state money to educate children. The article notes, quote, "It was the first decision in the United States by a court of that level in favor of private school choice," unquote. It goes on further to note, quote, "The legal logic was that it was parents using state-funded vouchers who were determining where children would go to school, not the state directly supporting religious schools. Therefore, it didn't violate the church-state separation." The article notes that this is when the era of vouchers really began, and further goes on to say that overall academic outcomes in Milwaukee or Racine have not really improved and are deeply concerning. The second has to do with special needs vouchers, and you've already had a chance to look at the DPI release on that. So that, let's see, that's dated June 13th. It states, lists 84 schools that will be participating in the special needs scholarship program. The program was created as part of 2015's Act 55 and allows a child with a disability who meets eligibility requirements to receive a scholarship to attend a participating private school chosen by the child's parents or guardians. As of now, only one Green Bay private school will be participating. And number three is just the fact that Kenosha Unified School District has been awarded the first school safety grant in the amount of eighty-eight, $888,788. The deadline for the grants was June 8th, and our district has submitted their request in the amount of $876,399 as well. And then the fourth item is an update on the Blue Ribbon Commission. If Michelle would like to fill us in. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just about, you said there was one school participating in the first school academy?
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame, Notre Dame Academy.
The article that was attached that has a full list, yeah.
So with the, with the Blue Ribbon Commission, obviously there's still a lot of reading and work to do. There's a lot of information being shared right now in terms of where the issues are across the state. And I think that we would see that we continue to look at where the students are that are being well-served and not well-served. And the documents that were provided to you were two PowerPoints that were shared at a recent hearing. One really focusing in on where the school funding is for the state of Wisconsin and the recognition that we are programmatic in how we fund our schools from the perspective that it isn't a student by student based on student needs per se, but rather comes as a program dollar value, and then schools are asked to distribute it whatever way they have it aligned to their student ratios. The other piece that I think continues to be problematic is the grant piece. And you referenced the fact that Kenosha has received their safety and security grant, and this particular individual basically calls out the fact that the grant funding is soft, number one. So it isn't an allocation for school safety that children will receive year after year after year. It's an allocation that comes to a competitive grant process. And if school safety is the priority for a school, for the state, then why isn't that being addressed that way? So some concerning pieces in that regard. I know there's been mental health grants and so on. So the conversation continues, and I think that one of the things that we're talking about locally around education and we saw the video from Partners in Education, is really looking at what is the next step that we need to bring forward to Madison to really talk about the fact that, you know, what is the vision for public education? What does a state really believe? You know, is, does the legislature feel that the funding is too low or too high? Do they believe that there is a certain threshold around and what's defensible to meet the needs of each and every child being well-served across the state? So a lot more conversation going on. I anticipate that within the next several months, we will be called in to meet with the leadership from the Blue Ribbon Commission. But again, there's a lot going on behind the scenes in terms of sharing data and information as well to really think about the revenue limits and the revenue ceilings and so forth. So the other thing is, and I did mention it, that I had an interview with the, with the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and John was, Cash was with during that process to just talk about where things were going. And I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to even understand the complexities of the funding streams. But the vouchers aren't helpful, and I think that enrollment counts, and it will be very interesting to see the next steps. And it really, it really goes to the fact that if we are going to ensure that every child in the state of Wisconsin has equity and access to high-quality education, something has to change. And in doing so, if there's a limited pool of money, it won't be coal-fired laws. And I think that that's really the piece that people don't want to talk much about.
Do you know the status of adding the voucher, the monetary amount on tax receipts?
What, the total is for the state?
No, do you know about the resolution?
It is, it's still part of the conversation. It's still part of the request. It's still part of the work that the Blue Ribbon Commission is, and they're repeatedly asking for transparency.
They haven't said no.
They haven't said no, but they haven't, you know, that would have to be a legislative piece as well.
Right.
But, but there is, there is a push for it. There is a push for it on every level, and it's come out, and I, and I believe it's something we want to see.
Is there anyone saying anything else on it?
Not publicly yet.
The voucher components.
Well, yeah, I said, they don't talk, I mean, there's only been one hearing where the voucher folks were present to talk about it.
The production people?
Yeah, you were present at that one in Milwaukee. But other than that, I believe that every, every person testifying, representing various organizations, have been asked for that transparency and the recognition that it is a, it is a public dollar that's going to private, that's concerning.
I don't think that any of your time, the legislature itself, you know, I mean, outside of the Blue Ribbon Task Force.
There were different groups and efforts though brought forward, asking for it, the transparency and positions taken.
Right, to the legislature.
Yes.
But I don't think they...
That it ever moved.
It never moved to a bill or a hearing or, did it?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay, yeah.
Michelle, what is the article in the...
You know, it, I really don't know. They were trying to interview a lot of people, I got the impression, and it was possibly an intern, so I think the young woman, I, that's Laurie.
So it could be a bit before we see it?
Well, I think there was, it's very complex, and I think they were trying to have a lot of voices.
Okay.
So we'll see where that goes. But I, you know, I don't see this moving quickly, and the next biennium doesn't start for a while, so they have some time to really work the work. I see that as good news because there's, there are people willing to start moving efforts around equity and funding, representing workforce development, kinds of folks that see that as a very important next step for us, investing in our children and public education.
Okay, that's the end of the report.
Okay. Next is the board member's school visits. Of course, school is out, but I don't know if anybody has anything the end of the year. Brenda?
So I visited all the schools that I was assigned to and then went to, and realized I was supposed to wait till next year.
Well, you don't have to wait.
Yeah, she didn't feel too. But I think, yeah, but I think I actually mentioned that. But what I actually really want to say out loud is something that positive. I had taken my daughter out of the school she had been in six years. She had transferred to Franklin Middle School, not knowing a soul, and had a really great year academically and socially, and it made all the difference in our life. And I'm just really, really grateful for the Franklin team.
Good. Yeah, I attended, Howe had their Bridges training last week. It was all day, I just was there for the morning. And it was really interesting just to see, they were, I mean, everybody, the teachers were very engaged, having fun, learning new ways and approaches for, for teaching math and learning about their new resource, and they seemed really very excited about it. So it was kind of fun to see just sort of the ins and outs of some of the lessons and just the new ways of approaching math. And I know they have, John Magus sent us a schedule of the summer professional development opportunities, and you know, if you're interested, I know a number of the elementary schools have Bridges training, and it might be an opportunity to, you know, stop in if it's your school or not, you know, you can attend one of those if you're interested in seeing some of that. And if you don't, I'm sure you can send us that schedule again.
Sure. And actually tomorrow morning, we're doing a pick-off at NWTC for the principals, elementary principals. I plan to go, just sort of go in the opening welcome. Probably not locals have people participate at the welcome, but if they're, or welcome or... They need very, they need very...
Is that the principals literacy?
No, that's the principals Bridges math.
Oh, that's Bridges. There's a literacy one later that I...
There's...
Yeah, I had that one on my calendar. Okay, thanks. Andrew?
I just had some brief visits. I had some extra time last week and was able to, didn't have to be at work, and I visited Fort Howard and Howe and Webster, just kind of going through and saying hi to staff and saying thank you and have a great summer, and just seeing some of the, I had not been to any of those three buildings yet this academic year, so I didn't quite, I didn't get close to all of them this year, but I was able to visit those, and they were some nice, nice visits. One, one place, one place I was at said we're, someone had said we're glad you're here, and it would be even, even better if you could come and stay for half a day sometime and do a variety of things. And I said, all right, since you asked, I'll, so I'm going to go there for, said before the end of September. So we'll get, we'll get that figured out, so.
All right, just to, there's a lot of construction going on. All the referendum projects are well underway, so if anybody out in the community is thinking about dropping by a school, I'd encourage them to give a call. There may be an alternate entryway they'd like them to use, or safety is, obviously there's some entrances and exits that look a little bit different. So again, if you're going to go visit a school, I, and I'm sure there are people that want to visit throughout the summer to recognize that it's not always business as usual when you go in the door, so we just want to make sure that people are aware and call ahead and make sure that they're going to just visit on their own, and they're welcome to do that, but give a call ahead so people don't know and they can direct you the best way to get in.
All right, then, district events. I, this isn't technically a district event, but I just want to get this in the mail today. I'm not able to attend, but it looks like it would be a really good conference. It's at the KI Center in Green Bay on July 13th and 14th, and it's one day on school safety, and one day is their Summer Leadership Institute. So anyway, if you're interested, let Sandy know. I don't know what the...
I'm actually doing a presentation there.
Oh, are you? Oh, there you go.
I should go. Cheer you on.
So, yeah, if you're interested, just let Sandy know. I don't see what the deadline is on this card. Usually it's what, a week ahead, 10 days ahead of the actual conference date, so just let her know. Next is our systems reports. First is Teaching and Learning, and that'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. I'm going to be just forward because I've been told I'm too self-spoken.
Ooh, wow.
I know. Imagine my surprise. I move that the...
Who said that?
Chef.
Chef.
Look at him, he's hiding now.
Photo witnesses.
I witnessed it.
All right. I move that the Advanced Placement Statistics Content Essential Document is presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidneykow?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Cary, six zero.
Now, these are all discussed at length at least. I move that the Biology and Earth Space Science Resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Sidneykow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Aye.
Cary, six zero.
I move that the 2018-19 Head Start Grant Application as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Sidneykow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidneykow?
Aye.
Cary, six zero.
I move that the Boys and Girls Club of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the Fund AD and/or 21st Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school program.
Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the YMCA of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the Fund AD and/or 21st Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school programs for Howe, Dodie, Eisenhower, Sullivan, Baird, Beaumont, and Tank Elementary Schools.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Procedures for Release Time from School for Supervised Work Experience Rule 341.21 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the District Alternative Education Programs Policy 342.6 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Student Programming and Schedule Changes at Secondary Level Guidelines Rule 343.11 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that School Staffing Guidelines Rule 343.2 and Class Side Procedures Rule 343.2 as presented be approved?
Second.
I do have one, one thing.
Go ahead.
If, with the understanding that there are some things about the staffing, this is necessary to get things in gear for, for trimesters, I'm, I'm okay with voting yes on this motion, but that doesn't change anything about my position that we do need lower class sizes and hard limits on class sizes and points at which classes automatically split. However, this does have to pass. This is like a must-pass right now for the East trimesters to work, so I am voting yes tonight.
Right.
Okay, Sandy? Warren? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork? Aye. Carried six zero.
We are on M. Is that where you guys are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I'm, there was some concern.
Well, yeah, I thought, did we get J and K both? Did we miss J?
No.
I was confused for a moment, too, but I.
Okay.
Are we good, Sandy?
I'm going to get online one, and I haven't.
Okay. Okay, we're back to M.
Okay.
All right.
I move that the Transfer of Credits from International Study Policy 343.8 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Procedures for Admitting and Attendance of Foreign Exchange Program Students Rule 422.1 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that Honors High School Policy 345.5 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork? Aye. Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Graduation Requirements Policy 345.6 and Procedures for Meeting Graduation Requirements Rule 345.6 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork? Aye. Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Guidelines for Participation of Students in Graduation Ceremony who have not met graduation requirements Rule 345.62 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Warren? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Procedures for Admitting and Attendance of Foreign Exchange Program Students Rule 422.1 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Procedures for Admitting and Attendance of Foreign Exchange Program Students Rule 422.1 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Participation of Non-Public School Students in District Courses, Programs, Activities Policy 423 and Participation of Non-Public School Students in District Courses Policies, Activities Rule as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment Policy 424 and Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment Procedures Rule 424 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork? Aye. Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Student Attendance Intruency Procedures Rule 431 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork? Aye. Carried six zero.
I move that the Intra-District Transfer Procedures Rule 433 as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dork? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Guidelines for the Selection of Academic Excellence Higher Education Scholarship Recipients Rule 460, Pren. 1, and Guidelines for the Selection of Technical Excellence Scholarships Recipients Rule 460, Rule 2, as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Warren? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And that concludes my report.
That was epic.
Thank you.
We almost used every letter of the alphabet.
I saw that.
Only two, two are left.
All right, next is organizational support. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, we had no business and finance items. Under discussion, public comment, and action items, I move that the table of organization be modified to reflect the addition of middle and high school activity directors, 12 months, salary group 11, and the associated job description as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Scott Mallion, Middle and High School Activities Director at Washington and East, to Middle School and High School Activities Director at Washington and East, 12 months, salary of $72,427, effective July 1, 2018, as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Warren? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move the transfer of Amy Hogan, Middle and High School Activities Director at Lombardi Middle School and Southwest High School, 191 days, to Middle and High School Activities Director at Lombardi Middle School and High School, 12 months, at a salary of $77,479, effective July 1, as presented be approved?
Second.
I just have one thing. I just want to point out for, for anyone who's following from home that didn't, wasn't, didn't get the information last week, two weeks ago, these are positions where they were 191-day contracts, but since work on activities continues into the summer, they were getting additional days. So, now it's a flat, a flat rate, which in many cases is, although not all cases, is a revenue-neutral kind of thing.
All right, Sandy? Maloney?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dork?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Yeah, I moved that the transfer of Susan Kister from Middle and High School Activity Directors, 191 days at Franklin West, to Middle and High School Activity Director at Franklin West, 12 months, a salary of $77,479, as presented be approved?
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork? Aye. Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Joshua Patrick, Senior Programmer, of Senior Programmer slash Manager of Programmers, to Director of Technology at the District Office Building, at a salary of $108,672, effective July 1, 2018, as presented be approved?
Second.
And this is, this is a promotion replacing someone who's retiring.
All right, Sandy? McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the employment of Heather Nelson as an Executive Assistant Paralegal, 12 months, an hourly wage of $2834, continued on pre-employment requirements, effective July 9, 2018, as presented be approved?
Second.
I have a question about this. Is that a position that's created, or is that a position that's replacing someone else that's not, that's no longer there?
It's replacing, it's Ellen.
It's replaced.
That's, that's the one, right? Who became the Title Nine Cor.
Okay, yep. Yep.
All right, Sandy? Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney? Aye. Warren? Aye. McCoy?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the deadline for the actuarial review of the medical plan, including plan design, be extended to October 31, 2018, in order to reopen the procurement process?
Second.
I just want to say, this is, as the person who proposed the actuarial review, this was at, this was at my request. We had one bid. I don't think there's necessarily, I don't have any serious problems with the bid, but since there isn't a time sensitivity to August versus October, I thought it's wise to seek out a second bid if you can, and this shouldn't affect our chance to do anything with the recommendations if, if we decide to make any changes.
Okay, any other questions? Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Okay, then the next meetings are listed. I move that the Board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance valuation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to on such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit personnel matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motions for closed session, so provided by law.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Carried six zero.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.